Good to see you.
First time you come out.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to the Ridley Township Board of Commissioners meeting this December 21st, 2022. We'll begin with the President's to apply.
The President is the guardian of the United States of America and the guardian of the court of justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. The roll call. Mr. Sarzini?
Here.
Mr. Marzak?
Here.
Coming?
Here.
Mr. McManaman?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Riller?
Here.
Mr. Malasaka?
Here.
Mr. Reddolph?
Here.
Everyone's here. Thank you. Okay, we have a public forum. Paul McGonigal. One of all, give your name and address for the record. Yeah, right in the line.
Hi, Paul McGonigal, 414 Ohio Avenue in Millmount Park. Just like to start out by wishing you all a happy holiday. Thank you for all the work you do throughout the year, especially this time of year. Happy holiday to everyone in the room. And Mr. McCrae's listening in, I wish him a happy holiday. I'm sitting up there. And my old buddy, our old baseball buddies from way back when. But just a quick concern, with the Millmount Republican Club, I'm sure you're all familiar, I live on the same block, about halfway down the block. Over the summertime, I think they got a much louder speaker system over there for their parties. Their parties usually end around nine o'clock, but the speakers are pretty loud. It actually will rattle my windows at night. Now, just recently, about two Saturdays ago, they held a beef and beer for something called Love of Baseball. And some of them it was Ridley Police, I'm not sure, but it said that on the Facebook page. I don't think Facebook, but I just seen somebody send me a thing for Facebook and it said it was something about Ridley Police. This party went on until 11 o'clock at night, and it was extremely loud, a lot louder than the normal parties. And the fact that it went on until 11, I get up at five in the morning for work, and it just was, you know, mind boggling how loud it was. I did make several calls to the Ridley Police, and not sure if you can hear that, but this is, this is in my bedroom at 11 o'clock at night. When the party did finally wind down, the lady police officer really came by and she suggested that next time I should go over and tell them to turn it down. I don't think me walking into a barroom with drugs would go over too well telling them to turn their wheels down. But if you could maybe address the Millmount Club for me and let them know like, hey, nine o'clock?
I'll take care of that.
Appreciate it, sir.
No problem. And I thank you for coming again. Happy holidays for everybody.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public forum? Seeing now, could we approve our previous meeting minutes, September 28th, 2022?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Managers report. Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is township has come to a five-year agreement with the Teamsters Local 107, who represents our administration as well as our high winds sanitation employees. The total wage increase over the five years is 15%. The employees must adhere to a new safety wear, dress code and sanitation, dress code policy, and sanitation employees are now going to work Veteran's Day in exchange for Columbus Day. This was done so there isn't two double trash days in a row. So give the men and women in the sanitation department to even out the trash, so don't get stuck with two double days in a row. We need a motion to approve the contract. Make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the next thing is, we received a proposal from Lightstone Economy Eats to perform the 2022 fiscal year audit, and it cost $26,520. A motion to accept this proposal is requested.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Next one, board. Mr. Malasaka?
Trash collected in November was 1,263.91 tons, where second collected in November was 168.38 tons. We collected five TVs and monitors in November for a television monitor recycling program. More information on our program is available on the township website at www.ridleytownship.woods.
Thank you. Sources report. Neil?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a few tax assessment appeals. First one is for 2034 Parker Avenue in Ridley Township. This was filed by the school district for volume number 38, pass year 301809.00. The county had assessed this property $435,110. Our appraiser came back with a value of $600,000 for 2021, $625,000 for 2022, and $650,000 for 2023. There was a negotiated settlement in this case, which would be for 2021, a fair market value of $575,000, an assessment of $575,000. For 2022, $600,000, a fair market value assessment at $600,000. And for 2023, a fair market value of $625,000 with an assessment of $455,000. There's been a change in the common level ratio that occurred during this past year. This all adds up to an increase in taxes for the township, $764 in 2021, $900 in 2027. And overall, we had a $791 increase for 2023 if the tax rate's the same. This settlement was approved by the Ridley Township School Board of Directors on November 7, 2022. So we need a motion for the approval of settlement authorization. We need a signed stipulation that fixes the assessed values for 2021, 2022, and 2023 as represented.
Motion motion. Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next tax appeal is for 537 West McDay Boulevard. This is that strip store right there at McDay and Millmount, request diagnostic and premier. It's right on the boulevard. This was filed by the taxpayer for volume number 38.05.008.08.00. The county had this assessed at $3,218,810. Taxpayer's appraisal came in at $2,400,000. Our appraisal, appraiser came in at $2.5 million for 2021 and 2022. And for 2023, it was appraised at $2,600,000. That was a negotiated settlement between the taxpayer and the, and the school district, and what they're asking for the rates to be set at $2.5 million assessment for 2021 and 2022. And for 2023, with the change in the common level ratio, it would be $1,838,200. There would be a reduction in taxes for the township of 3926 for 2021, and 3790 for 2022 and for 2023. Based on those years, it would be another $3,650.
Any motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the last tax appeal we have for tonight is for 1253 McDay Boulevard. This is the McDonald's right on McDay and Fairview Road, volume number 38.02.01.343.50 filed by the Ridley Township School District. The county had the property assessed at $629,900. Our appraiser came in at $1,103,850 for years 2021 and 2022, and for 2023 at $1,127,585. The negotiated settlement would be for assessed value of $1,103,850 for 2021 and 2022, and $820,822 for 2023. This would, this would be an increase in tax revenue for the township. And we need a motion for approval to settle a multiplication. We need a signed stipulation based on the values which I represent.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Engineers report. Mr. Katania?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a five certificates for approval. Radio Communication Services 2022 Police Radio Maintenance Contract $3,229.01. KDU Services Incorporated the 2022 Storm and Sanitary Store Contract $49,422.10. And Avidia Contractors Inc. Hagganis Sanitary Store Replacement $6,651.71. Duke's Route Control Sanitary Store Manhole Inspections $5,395. Harchick Construction Traffic Signal improvements by Harley Grant $30,388.4. Moore Construction Services Incorporated Stockton Circle Sanitary Store Manhole $13,975. Moore Construction Services Incorporated Morris Avenue Sanitary Store Check Vault $7,450. Battlefield Enterprises LLC Arlington and Haver Road Storm Drainage Reconstruction $12,985. Battlefield Enterprises LLC Dale Road Inlet Replacement $19,330. Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated McDay Boulevard Improvements $2,316.25. Traffic Plan and Design Incorporated Green Light Go Design $2,863.75.
Need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Detaf lagitation of bids in Hutchinson Terrace Drainage Improvements. Open bids on December 14th and received three bids ranging from $94,110 to $152,300. Those bids were over budget and recommended they all be rejected and authorized to be rebid.
Is a motion.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Proposal from Ferguson Mechanic Incorporated Stage Two Decommissioning. This is for the underground fuel storage tank here at the Tampa building. It's an amount of $5,980. It's, the state has come up with new regulations as far as the dispensing of fuel. This proposal is in compliance with the new regulations.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion. A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
resolutions to H2O PA grant program and then PA Small Water and Store Grant Program. These are two grant opportunities that came from the state. The first one is the H2O PA grant. This is the amount of $603,750 for sanitary sewer work in the Crumlin area. The PA Small Water and Store Grant is $441,692. And this is for storm, storm water quality improvements at various locations of township, kind of meeting our MS4 requirements. Need approval for those resolutions.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Finally, 10 best project status. I think last month we spoke that we asked the contractor if he had one process, that he has to put a hold after the holidays and we'll start back up in general. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Highway Sanitation Committee reported. Mr. Saunders?
Hey, Mr. President. Residents are reminded there is no trash collection on the following dates. Friday, December 23rd, Monday, December 26th, Friday, December 30th, and Monday, January 2nd. There will also be no trash collection on Monday, January 16th, an observance of Martin Luther King Jr. birthday. The Township 2022 curb side leaf collection program has ended. Residents are asked to bag their leaves and place the bags, bags curbside on regular trash days. We had some new leaf collection equipment this year, which worked out great and resulted in a more efficient collection. Thank you to our public works personnel for the hard work this leaf collection season. And last but not least, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of two 2023 Ford F-350 vehicles for our public works department. In order to beat the pricing increases, we would like to order before the end of the year. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Norance Committee report. Stoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer to Township Manager Mr. Ryan.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. We need an authorization. We need a motion for the purchase of the Ford vehicle.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we have, tonight is ordinance number 2068 being the 2023 budget, and ordinance number 2069 being the 2023 tax levy are up for consideration tonight. We're so pleased to announce there'll be no tax increases this year coming for the budget and no increase in the sewer or rubbish for next year. I want to thank all staff, Joe, and all the department managers, and all the board who worked so hard the last couple of months trimming the budget. So, so we calculated a no tax increase again this year. So, good job by everybody. We want to thank them. Thank you. It's not easy to do. So we ask everybody to bring your papers back up when you're done. We have to redo them. We're just getting some weight out. Total proposed general fund budget for 2023 is $26,270,755. The budget includes replacing equipment and vehicles for the police and public works department. The township is looking to secure recreational recycling grant for 2023. The budget will allow us to continue to provide the same quality of municipal services to our residents that they've come to expect. The rubbish fee will remain at $255, $255 per house, per household for trash removal and $390 per household sewer charges. Our senior citizens rebate program with refunds for $100 for sewer charges and $50 for rubbish charges will continue for eligible residents who qualify on the PA Property Tax Remit Program. So if you have any questions, contact our office, contact your commissioner, and we'll see if you qualify for us. We'd be happy to help you save some money. We need a motion to approve ordinance number 2068, the 2023 budget, and an ordinance, an ordinance number 2069, the 2023 tax levy. We'll go both together.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Great job. Okay, we have, Mr. Neil, you want to take 2070?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2070 deals with amendment of the general code of the Township of Ridley, Chapter 202, Article 4, Parking and Storage of Trailers, which will now be known as the Parking and Storage of Trailers Recreation Vehicles or Boat. Also, there were definitions added to this ordinance with respect to recreational vehicles, shared and common driveways, and private driveways. Also, some highlights amended, Section 20215, in which no recreational trailer, vehicle, or boat shall be over 28 feet, or utility trailer over 20 feet, that can be stored on private property located within the township. Also, no recreational vehicle, no recreational or utility trailer, recreational vehicle or boat shall be permitted to be parked in a common or shared driveway, or printed in private driveways with conditions that the recreational vehicle, boat, or trailer should not be parked within three feet of a principal or accessory structure, and not within three feet of any property line. If there are two driveways that share a common property line, these vehicles or boats shall be not parked more than three feet from the joint property line.
Need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Charles, you want to take the next one? This is the Resolution 2023 Community Development CDBG Program.
As you're aware, you chair the county, that's three of our grant programs. It's setting aside funds for public facility and infrastructure improvements in eligible areas of the township, which is basically limited to sections of Crumlin and a portion of Woodland and a section of the home section, smallest piece of home section. As required by the grant, the grant procedure, we had a public hearing last week seeking resident input. Received that resident input, and tonight we need to make a motion to authorize a primary, application, a project for primary, application, a project for an alternate application.
Thank you. Do you have the projects listed? The ones we're going to be checking?
What we discussed would be to, primary project would be your recreation improvements, which would include a playground in an undeveloped parts on Haver Road, and upgrades to the Felicio Park on Smiler Street.
Correct.
The alternate project would be some traffic calming along Holmes Lane from McDay to Chester.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Neil?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before the board tonight is a resolution with respect to an application filed by CBOCS Pennsylvania LLC, who's affiliated with Cracker Barrel. There was a public hearing that was held on December 15, 2022, which time the applicant presented evidence and testimony with respect to this project. What they're asking for is that there be a proposed transfer of the, of the inner township from Darby Township to Ridley Township for license number R828331, that was currently licensed to 1061 Peppermoon LLC for premises at 1061 Cedar Road Glen Old and Darby Township, to CBOCS Pennsylvania LLC for a trust tract within Ridley Township at 125 South Stewart Avenue, Ridley Park Ridley Township, which is the Cracker Barrel. This application, again, has to, was also, this was approved, I mean, excuse me, it was advertised last week for a public hearing twice, as recommended under the code by the township, and we did have the hearings before the board tonight, as whether to grant the application of CBOCS Pennsylvania LLC or deny that application.
It's, in my opinion, well, we'll see if we can take a motion to approve the application if anybody wants to make the motion for that first.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that. I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Preparation Committee report. Mr. Neil?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a great crowd last week at our annual Christmas tree lighting. Many thanks to Santa for visiting the township, and to all the Ridley Township fire companies for escorting Santa here. Also, thanks to our traffic maintenance and highway departments for setting up the Christmas lights and decorating inside and out. Looks really nice. Thank you to our police department, under Captain James Doherty, for all their help. And last but not least, the DJ Kevin Seaman, for the festive music. On behalf of the recreation department, we would like to wish all our residents a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Second thing I have, I know Jack will be excited, Commissioner Jack will be excited. We have Zumbo. Gold classes will resume in January. The cost will be $55 for each eight-week sessions. The sessions will be held Monday evenings, January 9th to February 27th, four to five, and Tuesday evening, January 10th to February 28th, 6:30 to 7:30. All classes are held at the Ridley Creekside Center. For more, for information on all the programs, and the link to our online registration, visit our website, www.ridleytwp.org, or our rec Facebook page.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee report. For the month of November, our police handled 1,000 in one call. The breakdown is as follows. Crumlin 82, Folsom 239, Holmes 117, Millmount Park 46, Warden 42, Ridley Park 133, Sea King 69, Swatmore 36, and Woodman 237. For the busy month. We received a very nice letter from Amber J. thanking our police officers for going above and beyond in responding to an incident at her home back in September. Without going into details, Mrs. J expressed her thanks to Captain Doherty, Lieutenant Havil, Lieutenant Smith, and Detective D'Ambrosio for their professionalism and the compassion shown to her during this very traumatic time. Much love, Amber. On November 16th, Officer Wright responded to McDay Boulevard, Millmount Park section of Ridley Township for a motor vehicle accident as a result of a thorough investigation and a keen eye. Officer Wright's family defendant could be in possession of a large amount of methamphetamine, of which he was under the influence. Appropriate charges were filed and taken in. November 18th, we received a reckless operator in the area of Millmount Park. The vehicle was said to have a flat tire, indicative of having struck a curve or object. Sergeant McDevitt located said vehicle within moments. The erratic operator was found and put under the influence of possession of cocaine. He was arrested and averred of any serious other damages. December 4th, Corporal Doyle was proactively monitoring traffic in residential area of Folsom, as police have been dated with complaints regarding speeding and stop sign violations. The traffic stop was affected as an infraction was observed. The operator, who was traveling with a small child, was found to be under the influence and in possession of cocaine. Cancel calamity was avoided as an unfit driver was removed from the runway, roadway. Crazy. Thank you. On November 26th, Corporal Zelke was dispatched to Folsom Home and, Folsom Home Depot for effective progress. The actor was said to have cut the security device off merchandise worth $500 and passed all points of sale. Same individual had accomplished the same theft the day prior. had accomplished the same theft the day prior. Upon arrival, defendant had led police on a foot pursuit and resisted arrest. Once taken in custody, was shown to be in possession of a amount of heroin, crack, cocaine, and marijuana. So, great job. I know it wasn't Captain Dockerty calling him on foot.
He's sneaky.
Fine. Ah, gosh. Reserve crossing guard, we need, we need crossing guards. The Ridley Township is for part-time reserve crossing guards. The hours in, in the morning are between seven AM and nine AM, and in the afternoon between two PM to three forty-five. Crossing guard salary is fifteen dollars an hour. If things are interested, please contact your commissioner or call the office at six-ten, five-three-two, forty-oh-five. Thank you. Someone, Hannah? Help and Co. Department Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of November, we had a hundred and ninety permits issued, thirteen contractors registered, thirty certificates of occupancy issued, a hundred and twenty-three rental inspections, and fourteen health inspections. That's all.
Public Committee report.
Nothing to say, Mr. President.
Library Amishos Senate Committee report is coming.
Thank you, Mr. President. The library trustees, Bradenton staff, wished to thank everyone who donated to the Giving Tuesday fundraisers last month. Money raised was used to support library programs. The trustees wished to thank our loyal patrons for their continued use and support of the library, and they'll hand out tote bags this month. Visitors to the set, to the library can collect a tote bag that is perfect size for their books. Five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three people visited the library in November and checked out eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three books and other items. Program attendance was one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight. Library will be closed Saturday, December twenty-fourth through Monday, December twenty-sixth for Christmas. For more information or to register for programs and activities, visit our website, www dot Ridley Library dot org.
Thank you. Great job, as always. Finance Committee report. Mr. Marce.
Thank you, Mr. President. All commissioners received the list of this month's bills, and I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to the controllers' review.
Make a motion. Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, any old and new business. Motion.
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Merry Christmas, and thanks for all the firehouses escorting Santa around.
It's a great thing. Good thing, and you gotta give them a prayer. I mean, it was cold out there, too. They take them around, so.
Uh, Merry Christmas to the board. Um, thanks to Joe and all the township, uh, employees for all their help, um, this year with everything. Thanks to the police and, um, everybody and Donna for each other and the library. Merry Christmas to all the residents.
Rebate them with a taxi stick.
The library, you guys are having a blood drawing, or did it, doing this?
We have another one coming up.
I mean, it's a couple of bites. They just come back from vacation. They need some blood. Every, doing it every month?
Pretty much, yeah.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
I used to be able to do the work, but now it's working from home. Not if anybody wants my stuff.
Is this story time tonight?
Merry Christmas, everyone. It's my celebration. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody.
I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and thank, thank you to Captain Dockerty and the police department for coming over and helping over Grace Park School with the traffic situation there. And I just would like to remind parents to be mindful of children walking to and from school, stopping at stop signs, going to speed limits, not just police officers sitting there. It's the law. You should be getting it every day. And Happy New Year.
Uh, just wanted to take a quick second, uh, say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Uh, also, a special thank you, uh, to the Leedom Fire Company for bringing Santa around last night, uh, to all residents of the sixth ward, and also to Captain Dockerty and the police, uh, for all that they do for us throughout the year.
Thank you. I'll just wrap it up. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and a Happy New Year. And like everyone else, I want to thank Joe, all the staff upstairs, all the departments, police, public work, uh, Co. Department, I don't know if I get some, that's why they're going to listen. Everybody that works for us makes us look good all year round, but, uh, you know, we have a great township, and we're all very proud. And it's because of their, every day work that they did, so we want to thank everybody. Have a Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year.